Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for Wednesday, October 10th, 2018. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes it has.
Would you please call the roll.
Carlin?
Here.
Eliason?
Evans?
Here.
Garner?
Herzog?
Here.
Olmsted?
Here.
Peeschel?
Here.
Please have a form.
Thank you very much. We have two students from Franklin Elementary School who are very excited about leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. We have Tatum Lipsky-Baseman and her brother Huxley Lipsky. So would you two come forward and start us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are so happy to have you here tonight because it's important for us to recognize our flag and what it means to us and it's also important for us to recognize that we're here for children. So, we're delighted to have both of you here. So thank you, Tatum, for coming and leading us in the pledge. And Huxley, you did a great job too. So there you are. You're welcome to stay or if you would like to spend the rest of your evening somewhere else. He's like, "Yeah."
Thank you.
Next, we have the Board President's Report. It gives me great pleasure to introduce tonight two chaperones who have traveled to Oshkosh from Rüsselsheim, Germany, which is near Wiesbaden or near Frankfurt, for those of you who need a geographic reference. Oshkosh High Schools and Emanuel Kant Schule in Rüsselsheim have been sister schools for approximately 25 years, from what we can discern. This program started in about, we think, 1993 with the first exchange. It involved several people from Rüsselsheim, including their principal, Herr Jakobs, one of their English teachers, Adi Helbing, and another teacher, Trudy Mogsum. And from Oshkosh West, we had Frau Lynn Dudley, who was a German teacher. We had Mr. Russ Hochstall, an English teacher, and Mr. Ed Holliday, a social studies teacher. And the teachers from both sides of the Atlantic decided this would be a great program for our students to learn from one another on both sides of the Atlantic. So the Germans typically come here in October of the even-numbered years and our students typically go to Rüsselsheim in June of the odd-numbered years. So, tonight, we would like to welcome the two chaperones who have brought the German students to our city for approximately 10 days or two weeks. I'm sorry. Oh, 15 days. They like it so much, they're staying for 15 days. Now, that's awesome. So we have Frank Cronus and we have Julia...
Lightman.
Thank you. Would you please come forward and share whatever message you'd like to share on behalf of your students who are traveling?
Yeah.
And, of course, yourselves.
So, dear members of the school board, Dr. Cartwright, Barb, thanks for the invitation. I'm kind of a regular guest. Every other year, I get the chance to talk a little to you in your school board meeting. And I was more than pleased when Barb asked me, "Could you come again?" And I said, "Sure." So, on behalf of the Rüsselsheim Area School District and on behalf of Emanuel Kant Schule Rüsselsheim, I'd like to say thank you very much to you and the parents, the teachers, and the kids from Oshkosh West High School. So, once again, 18 families have opened their houses, give home to 18 of our high school students. They're all sophomores. We brought 18 sophomores, 10 girls, eight boys. They have opened their house, give home to them. And what we have heard so far from our school kids, everything works out really, really fine. They're having a great time. We think that this is a unique learning experience for students on both sides of the Atlantic. And this program, well, kind of links the heartland of the U.S. to the heartland of Germany and we're very proud to be part of that. It's, as I said, it's a unique experience for our kids. They learn a lot, they see a lot. Tomorrow, we'll be going to Madison, toward the state capital. They have learned about the German history of Oshkosh. We've been to High Cliff State Park and do you know that you still have mosquitoes in October? At that time of year. Yeah, okay. It's part of the experience, so, yeah. And so, we're very grateful to have Oshkosh West and you as partners over here. We're very much looking forward to hosting. I don't know how many there will be, but a good bunch of Oshkosh West students at Emanuel Kant Schule Rüsselsheim in June next year. And I'm really positive that your students will make the same positive experiences that my kids tell me that they have over here. So, yeah. And, well, personally, for me, I think this is my 10th visit to Oshkosh. So, and it's always good to be back and some of you have become true friends, which is very good and I enjoy it very much. So, thank you very, very much for supporting that program, for having such a unique thing between the schools and, yeah, even between our states, the state of Hessen and the state of Wisconsin, our sister states, for over 30 years, I think, by now. One thing I'd like to mention as a last point, I take fun in looking at family names. So, I remember coming here and there were, excuse me, a lot more Germans. So I... I remember, I don't know what his family name was, but I remember telling that man that he's got a good old Prussian family name. So here we have Mr. Perschel, who is of some German descent, I guess. And I found, browsing your website, I found Mr. Kämmerer. That is... Mr. Kämmerer, what is your... What's your job here?
The Director of Pupil Services.
Oh. Do you know what your... Quite often, family names come from. A Miller...
Yeah.
Was a Miller. A blacksmith. Was a blacksmith. And do you know what a Kämmerer is?
I sure don't.
Okay.
That's all I want to know.
So, it's a good old German name and Kämmerer is treasurer. So you should sort of... Maybe you can... Yeah? So, on a board, whatever board, there is a treasurer. So, yeah, you are the treasurer. Yeah, you're welcome.
And Matt's got a new nickname.
So, thanks again. And, yeah.
Thank you, Frank. Did you want to add anything, Julia?
No, there's nothing left for me to say. But I'm really grateful that you have me here and I hope that I'll be able to come again in the next two years.
We hope so, too.
Yeah, we will keep the word green, won't we, Barb?
Same time in two years.
Yeah, definitely.
Yes, that would be wonderful. And to you and the other chaperones from Rüsselsheim and to the Oshkosh chaperones and the families, we thank you because a program like this does not continue without family support and without staff support, including Ms. Conrad, who's been one of the chaperones in her past life. So, we're grateful for all of those efforts to make this a success for our students. So thank you so much for coming. We appreciate you.
A pleasure. Thank you. So, we're off.
Okay. And I think the rain has lessened, so this might be a safe time to make a run.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And enjoy the rest of your stay.
We'll see you.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Auf Wiedersehen!
Auf Wiedersehen. That's a hard act to follow. I just wanted to note a couple of things in my report tonight. There will be meet and greets that have recently been scheduled to meet our new superintendent. As you can, as you have seen from her reports on what she's been doing and where she's gone over the last approximately three months since she's joined us, it's been hard to pin her down to a date when she has an open evening, but we found two. We found two openings in her schedule. So, Tuesday, October 30th, the public is invited from 6:15 to 7:15 p.m. to the Oshkosh West High School O Room for a meet and greet with our new superintendent, Dr. Vicky Cartwright. So please come. There will be refreshments and a chance to meet the new superintendent. And then on Saturday, November 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. until 10:30 a.m. at the Webster Stanley Middle School, there will be another meet and greet. So we have two different days of the week and two different times of day and hope that everyone who wishes to come out and meet Dr. Cartwright will have that opportunity to do so. So we look forward to that. And there will probably be a few board members there as well. Excuse me. I want to give a shout-out today to Oaklawn Elementary School, who had a walk-to-school event and invited both Dr. Cartwright and me to attend. There were some students who did a phenomenal job of walking around that track. I only did it twice, but they... Some of them did it as much as four and five times, which was pretty impressive. I also want to report to the board that I did attend a meeting on TIF districts in the city of Oshkosh. That's an annual meeting. Unfortunately, we don't have any districts that are concluding for about a year and a half, so there is no report on added revenue at this point. I also represented this board and the Wisconsin Association of School Boards at a recent meeting of the Wisconsin PTA, which was held October 7th in Brookfield, Wisconsin. I did get some really good materials from the DPI, which I will be sharing with Sherry and hopefully she can share those with all of you. I've told our two student representatives I'm going to be a little bit out of my comfort zone on Sunday morning again. I've been invited to the Wisconsin Association of Student Councils and I will be speaking about the role of student representatives on school boards. So, I even have a PowerPoint, so I'm good to go. We'll see. We'll see how that goes. Finally, there's a Wisconsin Association of School Board Regional Meeting to be held on Wednesday, a week from tonight, October 17th, at NINA. And several of us are attending that meeting. If you haven't signed up yet, there's still an opportunity to do that. And then finally, at our last meeting, I invited the board to complete your self-evaluation using the School Perception Survey from the WASB. So if you haven't done that, please get that done as soon as possible so that we have those data when we work on goals, which will probably be in the month of November. I said "finally," but I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. In your folders tonight is the publication that was ordered for all board members and that's the key work of school boards. This is a document we've talked about using for our own professional development moving forward, so if you get a chance to take a peek at it, go ahead, but we will be scheduling some times going forward to work on this together as a board. So thank you very much. And with that, let's turn it over to the superintendent.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Herzog. So, we have a lot of wonderful highlights to provide to you today, just about the amazing things that are happening in Oshkosh Area School District with our students. We're very proud of them. We're going to go ahead and get started right away with Oshkosh West High School. So, congratulations to the varsity baseball team for recently receiving the American Baseball Coaches Association Team Academic Excellence Award. This is the second straight year in a row that they are receiving this award. The Oshkosh West students' athletes also had a team grade point average of 3.24 during the 2017-18 school year. Way to go. Smith Elementary kicked off the school year with a back-to-school boogie. Fantastic was had by all. Additionally, Smith Elementary recently welcomed visitors from hands-on Oshkosh. These UW-Oshkosh students donated their time and talents to help with projects in the classrooms and out on the playground. Oakwood Elementary Schools in grades 2 through 5 recently spent time exploring and learning in nature. Each class was able to spend an afternoon at the Sheldon Nature Area, learning from Dr. Shannon Davis Faust and UW-Oshkosh students. Our students planted milkweeds, analyzed pond water, took inventories, conducted comparisons, and went on a scavenger hunt. Congratulations to Roosevelt Elementary 5th Grade Student Kennedy Maslowski. Kennedy was the winner of the fire prevention poster contest and to celebrate, she was recently given a ride to school in an Oshkosh-area fire truck.
That's pretty cool.
That is very cool. And she was even dropped off at curbside so all the students at the school could see her getting out. Students and families from Roosevelt Elementary took part in the Oshkosh West Homecoming Parade and received second place in the float decorating contest. Great job, Roosevelt! Students from South Park Middle School also took part in the Oshkosh West Homecoming Festivals. This is always a great way for our middle school students to connect to the high schools and show their Oshkosh pride. Shapiro STEM Academy has been busy engaging students and families. Students, staff, and families recently took time to answer the question, "What's your why?" Knowing why helps everyone understand their purpose and provides motivation to keep working to do their best every single day. The school also recently held a family night. Families had the opportunity to experience a small moment of their child's day, as well as make some great connections. Students and schools in need throughout the district recently received a generous clothing donation from Michelle Wilm of Wilm Dental. We are so grateful for their generosity and the many other organizations that are committed to helping Oshkosh students in need. Families at Reed Elementary recently took part in the school's first family night of the year. Students and families used the passport to navigate their way through science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics activities. Perry-Tipler Middle School and ALPS students celebrated a great start to the school year with a beach party. The students participated in a Hawaiian dress-up competition and also enjoyed games and music throughout the day. The Community 2 Program at Oshkosh North High School recently launched a new project called the Seniors Connect. The goal is to bridge the gap between generations and to help to relieve the social isolation that sometimes are experienced by senior citizens. Every Thursday for the next seven weeks, students will be visiting various partner organizations in Oshkosh. During the visits, students will teach seniors how to connect with the world through technology. 5th graders at Washington Elementary recently completed their first monthly mission. Every month, students are challenged to complete a STEM project mission. The latest mission involved creating an apple balancing device using simple supplies. Once students had created their device, they participated in a walking relay race to determine if their device would hold up. 8th grade students at Carl Trager Middle School are participating in a Stuff the Case Challenge to benefit the local day-by-day warming shelter. The goal is to collect 25 boxes of hot chocolate, 50 packages of Q-tips, and 100 containers of disinfecting wipes. Students, staff, and families at Lakeside Elementary are continuing to find joy in their journey this year. This year marks the school's 125th anniversary. To recognize the anniversary, staff and students embark on a collaborative art project, which is showcased at the school's recent family night. The school's also focused on helping students make their mark and recently celebrated International DOT Day, a day to celebrate creativity and persistence. Before the school year started, all of our elementary school teachers spent some time reflecting on why they teach. Throughout the year, we'll be spotlighting a few of our teachers and sharing their inspirational reflections. The individuals on the screen remind us of how supportive and encouraging our teachers are. We are so grateful for these individuals and for all of our teachers throughout the entire district. As superintendent, I am committed to being present and engaged in our schools and throughout Oshkosh. On the screen, you'll see just a few examples of where I've been spending my time for the past two weeks. And last, but not least, I wanted to do a public recognition of the school board. And for this school board, we have a gift for you later.
Oh, God.
I'm so happy.
Alison's going to be mad.
But I just want to make sure that all of you know, we really, really appreciate the work that you do, the support that you provide to our district, and the level of support that you provide each and every single day to our students, to our staff, and to everything that is Oshkosh Area School District-related. So with our most heartfelt thank you. And I hope that you're enjoying this week. Executive session.
Thank you, Vicky.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Right, keep going. Alison's not here either.
We'll just save Alison a slice. That's what we'll do. At this point in time, I will turn this back over to Dr. Herzog.
All right. Well, we have, trying to follow my agenda here, we have a presentation by some Oshkosh West students who traveled abroad this summer. So, we're happy to welcome you to the table there to introduce yourselves and to share your experiences of abroad travel and how you've learned and grown from that opportunity. You can pull up a fourth chair if you'd like.
I'm going to let them do the talking.
Whatever you like. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having us.
So, good evening, Oshkosh Area School District Board. We, well, I am Athena Dito, this is Faisal Amin, and Ella Hardy. And we are representatives of Oshkosh West High School. And over the summer, we went through, we traveled through a broad program called CIEE and many of you probably do not know what CIEE is.
So, CIEE is the, it stands for the Council on International Educational Exchange. So, there's different study abroad opportunities for every kid. There's the Language and Culture Trip, which lasts for four weeks. That's what all of us went on. There's also a Service and Leadership Trip for three weeks that many people go on as well, and also Global Discovery for three weeks. So, in total, there's like, oh yeah, 42 countries that kids can go to, which is crazy. This year, we had a pretty big amount of kids go to various countries all over the world. And we also currently have a couple kids traveling abroad through CIEE here at West. And I think, I'm not sure about that, but yeah, here in Oshkosh.
So here's some of the locations we went to. So, I got the opportunity to travel to Morocco.
Oh, yeah. I got to go to Peru this summer in June.
And I went to Peru as well, but the next month in July. And so the other places we have on there are Spain, because we had two students who went to Spain and we had two students who went to the Dominican Republic. Okay, so this is my trip. In the picture, the big group picture, that is all of our entire group of 20 students up at Machu Picchu. They all come from different parts of the country and actually, we had one from Germany as well. We thought this was really cool because without CIEE, we probably wouldn't have been able to visit as many locations as we would have if we had gone by ourselves. So that was a pretty big deal. In the picture on the top right, we are all making chocolate, Peruvian chocolate, because it is pretty fresh and they had a chocolate-making, chocolate museum, where we got to try fresh chocolate all the time. It was amazing. In the lower left-hand corner, that is a picture of the Plaza de Armas in Cusco, which is one of the biggest cities in Peru. We were playing a card game, but it was really amazing to go there and see the different architecture types in comparison to the smaller towns that we also visited as well. The middle bottom picture is just, I don't remember what city it was, but we were standing on top of some old Incan ruins and we got to look over a small city. And so, it's got some, again, very different architecture. And the last picture was one of our classroom settings that we had, where we were able to make and try different Peruvian foods. So, it was, it varied in learning types. So we had classroom education and then we also had community involvement as well. So, we got to experience multiple different types.
Okay, for my trip, I got the opportunity to travel to the city of Rabat, the capital of Morocco. And it was quite a unique experience that I would never have got if CIEE couldn't help because they provided us different scholarship amounts. Otherwise, our family would not be able to pay the tuition by itself. So for example, some of the things I got to experience was going to the northernmost tip of Africa and was looking over the State of Gibraltar, which is the picture in the center, which you could see the country of Spain just across and you could see the mountains. Another interesting thing about the city is that there's two different parts to the city. There's the new part, which is European-influenced and you'll see taller buildings and that. And then in the bottom right, you see the picture of the old town, which is basically very old-fashioned. There's open street markets, there's, it's not like you'd see in America, that's for sure. And then we got to visit the ruins, Roman ruins in Africa, which is in the bottom left. And that's one of the, one of the tallest buildings they had in the ruins. And then the top left is some of the food we got to try, which is by far the best part of going there. There's so many different kinds of food and the food had a very unique taste because all the food there is completely fresh. You don't really see like store-bought consumer goods. They're all grown, fresh grown, and it's a great experience for me.
So I also went to Peru and I got to say, it was one of the best experiences of my life and I think everyone here can agree that traveling abroad is amazing. The little town where we stayed, Pisac, had an amazing crafts market. Everything was handmade and it was crazy being in such an environment. Such a culture shock to have people, you know, heckling at you like, you know, "50 souls, 50 souls." It's crazy. I was even, I got to go to a church there in Pisac. That top photo there is just the beautiful, beautiful thing. It was hard to understand what they were saying. Partially, they were speaking in Quechua, which is a native Peruvian language, which is not at all like Spanish. So I was a little confused, I got to say, but generally, it was an amazing experience. There was a lot of Roman Catholic influences, along with, you can see that statue there in the middle. There's a lot of really native things, too. My host family, they were the nicest people ever and I like to talk to them about religion because one of them was very Catholic and the other one said to me, you know, "If I can see it, I'll believe in it," which is, you know, I don't even know what to say about it. Like, they said such good things. And of course, seeing Machu Picchu was amazing. Getting to watch Peru play and lose in the World Cup. All those people, they were so disappointed. And getting to pet llamas, like, amazing. And then that was my little house there. Yeah, I really miss it still.
So, traveling through CIEE, we got an opportunity to learn about many things we probably would not have been able to experience if we had not gone and traveled abroad. So, we all went through the Language and Culture Trip, so we all had a big impact on our language. I know, Faisal, you didn't know any Arabic before you...
Yeah, the Arabic there is quite different than...
So Arabic is something that is very hard to learn if you have no background to it. So my family spoke purely Arabic, so I really had no clue what they were saying for the good first three weeks of the program. So it was just a lot of hand gestures and hopefully doing the right thing. So that was a unique thing, but like, language is one of the things that, the only way to learn the language the best is to go to the country that speaks it.
Absolutely. And I know for me, I, oh, I have so much improved upon my language ability. I know before, when I was speaking Spanish, I had a lot of trouble with my fluency and thinking of things on the spot. It was always planned out. And by going to Peru, you had to think on the spot because you're having casual conversations with people. Otherwise, I don't know what to do. So, that was very important. Another thing, based off the language, was not just language itself, but the communication between people. By being forced into a situation where the people themselves there were different as well, so you would have random conversations with people on the streets or, as Ella said, like, haggle over prices in the market. So it was, it was a good opportunity for just on-the-spot speaking. The culture, every place that we went was very different, something we never would have experienced here as well. experienced here as well. I mean, I don't know. We all lived very different lifestyles, and I don't think that any of us are going to be able to look at living here the same in comparison to where we lived before. Like, I know for me, I went without hot water for the entire time that I was in Peru, and it was all ice-cold mountain water. So, that was amazing. And finally, our confidence levels, I know at least mine for sure definitely grew while I was there. I feel a lot more capable in my ability to handle myself or be independent. CIEE was a huge help in traveling. Without them, we would not likely have been able to go and visit as many places as we did, or live with a host family, which was a big part of becoming culturally immersed as well, seeing like how people lived on a day-to-day basis rather than staying in like a hotel. So, our scholarships helped by writing our essays and entering our applications. Without that scholarship money, it would have been a lot more difficult. The immersion setting was another big part of the language and culture that we helped to, that we were able to experience. And again, an emphasis on the places that we were able to visit was very different and very unlike anything that we would have experienced here in America. Overall, I think we had a very fantastic trip.
We're really thankful to CIEE and all of our mentors and our parents for allowing us to go a month in a different country. And I, I would have never gotten to see Machu Picchu, like, I would have never gotten to be this confident in my language skills and myself, my independence. And so, overall, I think that, you know, I highly recommend it for everyone. If you get a chance to travel, I mean, take it.
I think that is wonderful. So, I also, when I was in high school, through CIEE, I went to Mexico. And I was in Mexico City for four weeks, and then we went to Toscó. And then, my family, my host family, took me to Acapulco, which I don't suggest now, but, you know, twenty-plus years ago, it was an awesome place to go. And it's, like you three are saying, it changed my life. I never looked at things the same, I didn't do things the same. It made me more of a global person, you know? You can be in your bubble here in Wisconsin, in your little world, and it's, it's so different being out there. And I agree with you, with the confidence it gave me in my independence, that I could be in a different world, a different country, and take care of myself, and I didn't have my parents behind me. And you have your host family, but again, yeah. So, I, I agree with you, and I'm so glad you went, and I, I wish that more children had that opportunity, because it does, it's, it's such a difference in, in a child's life. So, we're proud of you guys for taking that leap, though, because that's a lot. That's, to go to another country, and thankful to your parents that they trust you too enough to let you go and do that, and the support you had. That's wonderful.
And I would just like to add, I suggest that you keep in touch with your families. I had studied in France, and I actually, twenty-five years ago, and I actually just scheduled a trip in February to go see my French family, because we have stayed in touch for twenty-five years now.
That's awesome.
Yeah, this, it's very timely, so I'm happy for you guys.
Yeah.
Sounds like you've been phenomenal ambassadors for Oshkosh West and the city of Oshkosh, and we appreciate that very much, and wish you well in your continued studies.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent ambassadors for other Oshkosh students who might be thinking about this kind of experience. So, thank you for all you've done, and thank you to your parents and your families for their support.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have two more students who are waiting patiently to share with us tonight. We have our two school board representatives, Michaela and Emmeline, and it looks like Michaela's going to start us off tonight.
Hello, everyone. I'm Michaela from Oshkosh West, and I'll be giving the October update. So, to kind of start off with sports, with the fall season coming to an end, people are starting to compete in conference, and also, I was going to mention earlier, the academic success of the soccer team last year, and they've also continued that trend, along with all the other teams and student athletes, just constantly working towards being able to do it all at the same time, and being able to handle sports and school at the same time. So, these are images of the soccer team, the swim team, and of the golf team. These are more images of sports, the tennis team and the cross-country team. Being on the tennis team, I can attest, it has always been a great time, and I'm very glad and grateful for everything that West did for us in general and for the other teams at the school. I know there have been a lot of successes amongst all the teams this year. Especially so the football team. We were able to beat our rival North, fortunately, this year. So, that was definitely a lot of fun for both teams. Moving on to music, the choir program is still constantly working. They have an upcoming performance on October eighteenth, and they will be performing When I Grow Up. So, here's an image of the choir and all that they will be doing. The band is going, is always working. They've been working all summer. They have pep bands, they have their varsity band, they have all different types of bands, and they are constantly working. And they will be performing at the football game this Friday, and in twenty days, they have their fall concert. Here's an image, we just saw her, Ella Hardy. She is practicing her solo, and they have a performance on October twenty-third. Clubs, we have a lot of different programs here at West, and in the last month, a lot of them have really kick-started, really gotten started. So, in the bottom picture, that is Sac and Buskin. That is an image of their last year's performance of The Wizard of Oz. This year, they are going to be doing something else. They haven't decided yet, but they are still working towards their performance and getting together. The image on the left is of the Wildcat Cafe. They aren't an official club, but they are obviously something that everyone gets involved in in the school and really enjoys seeing every single day, and really just getting involved with. Those are two students who volunteered during their open hours to do that. And then, the Den is a new startup at West. It was started last year, but everyone really got immersed in it this year. It's a program that was started by O'Neil, one of the clubs at West, and it's where we have a place within the school for students to go, and they are able to get things that they might not be able to get at home, like deodorant, shampoo, conditioner. And I know that for our last fundraiser, the tape fundraiser at our pep rally, we did put the fund, the funds towards the Den, because we feel it is a great program, and it's something that everyone at West or just in the district in general, it is a great asset for everyone. More clubs, mock trial, being in it, I can attest, it is sometimes a very grueling club, but we have really gotten started with our case. The case doesn't come out for about two weeks, but we do plan on having sessions in the morning. We meet at six-thirty twice a week, and we really just go over the law and everything that happens within it. In the top corner is GSA. They participated in the parade at the last homecoming, and they got really involved, and they did a great job. And in the bottom picture is fans at one of our games. I'm pretty sure that was the night game this last Friday. And they always do a great job getting the crowd ready and excited for the game and whatever they're doing. More clubs again. Index in the, on the left is always working. They are getting ready for the next issue. We have our meeting tomorrow, and we are going to have our all-staff meeting to really get ready for our next issue. And the top, Decca, is really getting started as well. We had our meeting today, and everyone is really getting involved and hoping to make it to state or internationals this year. And then, in the bottom is Rotary. They had their first meeting about two weeks ago, and they are really trying to get involved in the community and really getting involved with all, everything else going on within West and all the programs that really just reach out to the community. Other things going on around West, the Den is now open, kind of like I mentioned earlier. They are really providing a lot for the students, and it's really a great program that we have, and it really just gives students a place to go where they feel safe to really just, it gives everyone an understanding that not everyone has the things that everyone else has, and that other people consider easy to get. Other things going on, yesterday, the students, or students that were eighteen and up, were able to vote with the Women's League of Voters. They came to West, and they were able to register students to vote in the upcoming election. Homecoming was a great week for everyone. Everyone was very excited and got involved. As you can see, the bottom left is the football team and the dance team got together, and they did their dance. It was definitely a great performance that they did. They all got very involved. I know from talking to people on the teams that the football team was just as involved as the dance team. The bottom picture is a picture of the winning dodgeball team at one of our activities on Monday night last week. The top right is at the dance, that is homecoming court dancing. And then, the top picture is one of the dress-up days. We had Disney Dress-Up Day, and those are three students getting involved. Upcoming events, the football game this Friday against Nina is going to be at five o'clock. And then, we have the fall concert with the choir, October eighteenth. And the Halloween costume contest is going to be October thirty-first, so if you guys want to look at Facebook, you can see pictures of that. And then, parent-teacher conferences are going to be October twenty-second. Have a great month.
Nice summary, thank you. Emmeline.
Yeah, so, Oshkosh North so far has had a great month of our first year. First of all, choir's had a lot of events going on. We've been performing the Star Spangled Banner at football games. We're also involved in a lot of community events, such as a World War I performance at the public library, and a New Voices Choir in Appleton involves a lot of our members. Some band students from North recently combined with the West last Friday to perform a summer marching band show at their homecoming game. We all wore the West uniforms in the pictures. The orchestra is currently preparing for their upcoming concert, and the band is working on their halftime performance this Friday at their homecoming game. For athletics, girls golf finished fourth in the FEA tournament, which is the highest team finish for them since 2013, and they had a student advance to sectionals. Cross-country has their sectionals this Saturday, and they're currently led by Jack Share and Sydney Clark. Football has homecoming game this Friday at eight. Girls swimming has a few more meets until they head to sectionals. Girls tennis finished third in the FEA so far. Courtney Day moved on to state, and Gabriel Prein and Sonia Carner qualified for sectionals. Boys soccer is fifth place in the FEA, and they begin their regional games on Tuesday. And volleyball is seventh in the FEA and starts regional play on Thursday. The fall play is in full swing. The fall play this year is called Harvey, and it tells the story of Mr. Dowd and his imaginary friend who happens to be a six-foot-tall rabbit. It's a comedy that's set in the nineteen-fifties. We're currently in the middle of our homecoming week. Our theme is Dancing Through the Decades, which has been a lot of fun so far. Day one, which was on Monday, was Comfy Day. Everyone at North loved showing their Spartan spirit through the dress-up days. We had a lot of teacher, as well as student participation. We also have a contest with Verve where you can take pictures in front of the backdrop, and the winners win cash prizes if you post them on Twitter. Day two on Tuesday was Dressed for the Future, so we had some dressed as elderly, others dressed in their future occupations. That was a really fun day. We also had some events going on in day two, which was the Retired Faculty Lunch, which allowed a large group of retired faculty from North to get back together and talk to each other again. It was a really good time, I was there. The Drama Club also hosted the Eve of Improv, which was another fun homecoming week event. Today was Pinkout Day for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We had a ton of participation for that. So, coming up, our homecoming week continues, October eighth to twelfth, with the dance on the thirteenth, from eight to eleven P.M. North Choirs has their fall concert, October sixteenth, at seven-thirty P.M. at Alberta Kimball Auditorium. North Orchestra Concert is October twenty-fifth, at seven-thirty P.M. at Alberta Kimball Auditorium. Spartan Spooktacular, our community Halloween event, is October twenty-eighth, from one to three P.M. And then, the Fall Play will be November first through fourth in the North Auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lots of things going, lots of many positive things going on in each of our, our two high schools. And I understand Oaklon Elementary School also participated in the North Pinkout today. So, there was lots of pink throughout the school, which was wonderful to see their support as well. Let's see, do we have any other district administrator supplemental reports tonight? And are there any other reports, committee reports, or anything else from a board member? All right, well, moving right along then. Are there any non-agenda-related public forum presenters tonight? Seeing none, are there any agenda-related public forum presenters tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to our workshops. We have two workshops tonight. The first one, Mr. Fox will be leading, is the Summer Maintenance Projects and CIP, and that will be followed by a Facilities Studies update through Bray Architects, Mr. Fox and Mrs. Shore. So, welcome, Mr. Fox.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Tonight, I'd like to present to you as a recap from the summer's projects, some of the information that you may hear from tonight may have been presented as part of the minutes as the last Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, but I did want the opportunity to share with you what we have done, and give you an opportunity to ask any questions you may have of me. This year was our second year of our McKenstry Project. Typically, our second year does wrap up our McKenstry invested, our investment, our bonded part of our project. However, this year will require a third year because of the size of West High School and the glass project. So, this summer, our focus was Carl Trigger, which is a mechanical project requiring the replacement of some air handlers, modification of air handlers, piping pumps, some ductwork, taking care of some areas that were not air-conditioned, as well as some roofing problems. That school was shut down for the summer. We also worked on Webster Middle School. We replaced all three air handlers, which were air handlers from when the building was built. Those air handlers served the cafeteria, the gymnasium, and the auditorium. The mechanical projects continued at West High School, where we replaced the air handlers for the bandroom and the oar room. Much of the work at West High School occurred underground in the tunnels, replacing some of the aging piping that conveyed some air conditioning, water for the chillers, tying into the chiller that we replaced last year, as I had said, as a two-year project, and the mechanicals that we are working on will actually extend into next year as well, in 2019, as part of the glass replacement project. As I mentioned, West High School glass project, we are approximately thirty-five percent complete. If you've been by West, it's, it's quite noticeable, the changes that you've seen on the facade of that particular building. The focus this summer was changing the classrooms, the operable windows and affixed windows, as well as the insulated panels in all of the classrooms, which again, is approximately thirty-five percent of the building. Next summer, we'll focus on all the common areas, as we work our way around athletics, the Kimball Auditorium, courtyards, oar room cafeteria, and areas very similar to that. That project will begin on or about March first, depending on the weather, which, which does seem quite early, and it is. We'll be tenting off areas and trying to, to heat those areas, but it's approximately a thirty-two-week project to finish all the glass remaining at West next year. It should come to conclusion in approximately October. And again, that will include some mechanicals, primarily radiance, piping, any of those areas that are associated with the glass in that particular building. We also this year installed a new fire alarm system at West, and continuing with our last two years in updating our safety systems in the schools. This is our fourth fire alarm system in school that we've modernized with a voice strobe system, in lieu of the old horn strobe. Oakwood, we replaced the cafeteria roofing. Again, these were all part of the McKenstry bonded project that you did approve two years ago. So, I do want to take an opportunity, once again, thank the board for all their hard work in ensuring that we did have that money to be able to pursue these projects. The one project that will be remaining next year is the remaining portion of the glass project at West High School, and that will be our emphasis next year. Just a brief recap, some of the hardscape projects that we took on as part of our own budget. Oaklon Parking Lot, as you recall, we did acquire a piece of property next to Oaklon several years ago. We were able to demo that particular site, work with the city. We were able to repurpose that green space into a beautiful, fifty-stall parking lot, as well as some grass and some new trees and plantings. I think it's a beautiful site, and serves our staff quite well. Oakwood, we were able to replace the handicap ramp, their primary entrance, entrance number one, had a failing ramp, and we were able to pull that ramp away from the building to give the handicap more space to access the building, as well as a longer, more adequate slope to the ramp, which is more ADA-friendly. Franklin Playground was an asphalt rebuild project. Washington Parking Lot and North High School, their east parking lot, we replaced the parking lot, resurfaced it, as well as added all-new LED lighting for that parking lot. So, if you happen to go to any North High School activities, you'll see that that lot is well-lit as, as a West High School parking lot, Kimball Parking Lot, has been in the past. And lastly, roofing projects, Maintenance received two roof sections completing their building. Emmeline Cook received a large roof section, which comprised about sixty-five percent of their building. Emmeline Cook received a large roof section, which comprised about 65% of their building. That was a major roofing project. Lastly, a couple of quick notable mentions. We renovated some space at Webster to include areas for the SRO. A new nurses area was moved over from the elementary, more centralized within the school to help take care of some students that had transferred into the area, as well as a kiln area. We removed, rebuilt, and repaired many failing walls, which is standard practice throughout the summer. But I definitely want to recognize those maintenance staff for their hard work that they put into those facilities. We did have a boiler replacement project, which was not McKinstry-related. We did have some monies that were earmarked for energy efficiency. So we did have a boiler that failed at Roosevelt. We replaced that boiler this summer, as well as some controls. That boiler is now fired and up and running, and just in time as the cold weather is rapidly approaching us. And this summer, different than last year's, we did hire an additional summer helper to help maintain all the hard work that we collectively did as part of our curb project. And we did not want to let that go to weeds this summer. So we were fortunate enough to hire a summer helper from North High School as part of their AG program. He did a wonderful job, went through all the plantings and picked weeds and wood-chipped everything. He had some interactions with some principals and had some very positive feedback from the principals, seeing somebody there during the summer help maintain the plantings, but also if they wanted something different done, there was someone available to do that as well. So I wanted you to know, and I'm sure Beth would be ecstatic to hear, that all the hard work we did was not wasted, and it is being maintained. And I thought from a site perspective, I thought the schools looked probably as good as they've looked in my time here going into this fall school year. So I do appreciate the maintenance and custodial staff and the time that they put in this summer to help make sure, you know, as the teachers do and as principals do in preparing for education, they were preparing to receive people, and I thought it went off quite well. Are there any questions for me as far as what we were able to achieve through McKinstry or through our own staff this last summer?
Are there any boilers left that are like from the 1920s and 30s? Or have we updated every?
We have updated all of the... Well, there's one steam boiler left in the rec building that is original to that building. That is the only steam boiler left in the school system. Otherwise, our oldest boilers now are in Jefferson and Carl Traeger. So they are, believe it or not, approaching 20 years, well, 20 years old. So we do have one failed boiler in Jefferson that we need to replace, and we're looking at replacing soon the boilers at Carl Traeger.
Are there any questions or comments that you wish to share? That was a very impressive list. I was getting tired just listening to all the work that that done. No, seriously. When you have 14 elementaries and five middle schools and two high schools and a recreation building and a maintenance building, there's a lot of square footage and a lot of rope to take care of. So we are very grateful for the work you do and the work that our custodial crew and our maintenance people do to keep these buildings in good running order, because we know that they are getting older. So we appreciate the efforts to keep these in good working order for the students.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our second workshop item is a Facilities Studies update with Bray Architects, Mr. Fox and Mrs. Schnorr.
Tonight, I'd like to introduce two members from Bray. They'll be walking us through a presentation that they had provided for your viewing last year about this time. As you recall, we had done a facility condition assessment, which took approximately one year. And Clint, of course, will take a deeper dive into that presentation. But really, the premise behind the condition assessment was to give you a better idea, a snapshot, if you will, of where our facilities are at today from an infrastructure standpoint, not making projections, not developing any kind of future models or anything. It was just more or less to give you an idea of where we are today, both visually, as well as through a summary sheet on some estimated costs of what it would take to just repair what we have today to get it into a working model of what exists. So without any more information, Clint, if you want to go ahead and...
Well, thank you, Board, Dr. Cartwright, for having us back. Again, Kate Egan is also here with me today. She's been helping us through the process. And I think there were some other folks that presented a year ago with me as well. Kara and possibly Tyler were also pop here as well. So again, and to provide a little more context, I think part of this too is about... The facility study was really kind of a phase one, if you will, of this overall process. And since this was presented, again, about a year ago, we've started kind of an overall master planning process for the district in looking at things and providing some potential pathways for the district moving forward. But before we dive into that piece of it, we really felt it was important, given this, again, was about a year ago that we looked at this, that before we get too far ahead of ourselves, that we take a step back and just re-present this to the board, give you a little bit more information. I think one thing you'll see today is we're kind of, again, going to look at three case study buildings. I think last time we looked at Smith, if I'm not mistaken, as kind of our case study. So again, it's to kind of refamiliarize yourself with the process to date. And then we'll have a little bit of discussion, again, about what's to come moving forward. Again, as we always go through this process, we always like to frame the conversation that, again, the district has done. And as you heard from the list that Jim stated, the district does a wonderful job of maintaining your buildings. They're clean, they're safe, they're great conditions for students to learn. But the reality is, you know, many of them are older buildings. So you have, you know, worn-out carpet, worn-out flooring, ceilings, those types of things, you know, in addition to the meat and potatoes, the guts of the building, so to speak, and boilers and those types of things. Although not necessarily in your case. So again, part of this is, again, is to provide a snapshot in time. Again, this was presented about a year ago in August in terms of the facility. And then we did present kind of a facilities budget in December. So again, we're going to kind of move through all of those pieces. There's a lot of information here today, so I'm going to move pretty briskly. If there's any questions, please interrupt me as I go. If I use acronyms that don't make sense or you don't understand, please let me know, and I will try to correct myself from the kind of industry lingo. I'm also going to view this kind of at this level. If there's anything, again, that you have struggle viewing or seeing, I can zoom in. So when we get to some of the more detail-oriented stuff or information, I may zoom in as it goes through. So again, the study process, the facilities study process and assessment really looked through the buildings through a number of different lenses. Architectural site, engineering, I think the key part in that is we also had some engineering partners that toured the building from a plumbing, HVAC, and electrical point of view. We take a look at the building from the lens of ADA or Americans with Disability Compliance to understand what shortages your buildings have and understanding that. And then again, I think really what's very critical is talking to Jim and his staff and understanding what they see in the building. Again, they live the buildings every single day, so they know where the leak is, maybe in the corner of a roof somewhere, or there's some piping where they're having some leak issues. Really important to get their feedback. Again, a little bit more context for each of those areas of what we're looking for and setting out to do within each of those areas. Ultimately, those, the information then gets conveyed in a number of different categories. And I think, without going into too much explanation here, when we get to the actual case studies, I think you're going to see this analysis a little bit better. But again, you can kind of see the different buckets that we did look at or consider with each of the buildings. Just a couple of points of the site summary, I would say, in this particular case. We really did do a pretty significant deep dive in looking at pavement needs of each of the buildings, kind of cataloging and determining. And again, that's something that is also conveyed in the budget. So compared to some of the others that we've done like this, that was a little bit unique and, again, I think very beneficial for the district. Just really quickly, again, the facility, at this time, the facilities study was not really evaluating, again, quantity, size, or quality of educational spaces. Really, this was kind of what your building conditions were all about. It did not include solutions, so we weren't looking at adding classrooms or renovating spaces. It was, again, purely what was there. It did not include evaluation of capacity for the buildings. Estimation or approximation of how long things last, that's always a question. And, you know, using the boilers as an example, we have a 20... You know, you mentioned you have some 20-year-old boilers. Well, how long is that going to last? Well, as you know, you've had some that in the past lasted you almost 60, 70 years. You know, obviously, the... It's about making best practices. And so again, as we go through this, this is all about informing the district as you would move forward. So we know that there's 20-year-old boilers, and we may or may not have to consider replacing them as part of the project. We also know there's a lot of new boilers, and you've sort of checked that off of your list as you've gone through. Recommendation or prioritization, that was not included as part of this. Again, it was kind of a full analysis of the district, so we didn't take priority of one item over the other. It was, everything was kind of weighed equally so that you could understand the full magnitude. It was also not a projection of what these costs would be in the future as well. So we, again, we took, we did a cost analysis based on the current climate of the economy and the industry at the time, and not exactly knowing when these would be implemented. So now the fun, so if you were falling asleep during Jim, I'll put your... I'll try to be as entertaining as possible. So again, here's kind of one. So again, our case studies that we looked at, like I said last time, we looked at Smith. This time, we're going to go through Oakwood, Cook, and Merrill for our case studies. Again, what's really important about all of this, again, is the understanding. So within the study for each of these buildings, this cover sheet has some really great information that, again, we have, as we've started to look deeper into this in terms of a master plan, and it's really important. How many students are in the building? What's the square footage of the building? What is, how big are these sites? You know, accommodations for buses, accommodations for parking. So again, really trying to provide a lot of contextual information that is really valuable for this process. Within each of these buildings, another key thing, and this is really, you know, a lot of, a unique item for a lot of districts, is there's not kind of a nice way to tell the vintage and history of a lot of these buildings. So for each building, we did a kind of an evolution study of how the building got to be the way it was, all the way from the original. And again, this doesn't always represent every single renovation project that may have occurred during it. But this is, again, I think, a really important piece to just get a quick blush effort, our understanding of how the building got to be the way it is. We've found a lot of times that's a document that districts really appreciate. Again, just understanding the site, so we did GIS investigation for your city and county to try to determine the district-owned property. And again, cross-checking with Mr. Fox and his team of, again, what's owned property for each of these sites. Again, this one, you can see our building in the lower right-hand corner here, and a lot of green space here available, which is unique to some of the other buildings. Simple floor plans, again, trying to have, again, a snapshot document of what these buildings look like. Names of the buildings has probably changed, or names of the rooms has probably changed several times between then. So again, we can always update these as we go along. But again, understanding what the uses and functions of all of these spaces are. So Building Systems Summary. So I mentioned, again, our engineering partners went through the buildings and cataloged needs and deficiencies from the perspective of each of the mechanical components of the building. And I always kind of like to explain this in how I look at it in terms of interpreting what this all means, because there's a lot of information here. And this is actually kind of a condensed summary of ultimately what their report looked like. I always kind of equate it to a human body. Again, you have, you know, sort of your heart of the building that runs it. So in the case of the plumbing, you have your water service to the building. And then from there, you know, your circulatory system out to the organs similarly. In the plumbing, you have your piping running out to your components, your toilets, your water softeners, all of those types of things. So again, specific to Oakwood, I would say kind of a unique component of this is the building is on a well system, which we, I mean, we see it in schools. It's a little bit atypical, or generally on a city or municipal system. So again, a very important thing to know going into a project. A positive on this building, again, given its vintage of, it was '53, I believe, is that all of the water piping within the building is copper. So again, that's one we see, you'll see in some other buildings where we have a galvanized piping. And again, a good thing to note within that. Other pieces, some other pieces to consider that we look at, again, the energy efficiency of the hot water heaters, and then whether or not the fixtures inside the building are ADA-accessible or not as well. So again, there was some recommendations for replacing hot water heaters. And then again, as fixtures within the building are replaced or updated to consider replacement with ADA-accessible fixtures for the building, as well as more energy-efficient fixtures as well. Moving on to the HVAC, again, the district has gone to great lengths and done a wonderful job of updating things. So this, the HVAC system, for the most part, in this building was updated in 2013. So really, there, as you'll see when we get finally to the costs for this, there really wasn't a lot of prescriptive need in this building from the HVAC perspective. Again, rather unique in what we see from a lot of districts. So kudos to Ashkosh on going through the efforts in that regard. Again, the electrical system is very similar to, as I kind of stated, the body analogy for... In terms of, you have your service into the building and then your distribution out. One of the things within this particular building is the emergency generator within the building. There was a recommendation to update and replace that as part of a potential project. Also, just kind of looking overall at the condition, and this is kind of a district-wide thing. Most buildings still have kind of the fluorescent fixtures within it. So again, the recommendation that, you know, the consideration to upgrade to LED at some point in time in the future. Again, the electrical looked at a lot of other items, keyless entry for all of the buildings, some notes on cabling within the building, fire alarm, kind of all of those types of things. So again, a pretty deep dive in terms of considerations for each of the buildings. From there, again, this next type of areas is needs assessment. And again, this is really, I'd say, a physical assessment of the buildings, again, not quantity/quality educationally-type assessment. So again, looking at a number of different buckets or areas within the building, both interior, conditions of walls and needs within the building. Doors, again, as you'd expect in a 1950s building, the doors are original. They've been lovingly utilized for many years. And again, consideration for replacing some of those as necessary or as a project may dictate. Looking at the condition of ceilings, flooring within the building. So that kind of carries us through the interior items that were looked at. We also looked at the condition of a lot of the casework within the building, so the cabinetry, built-in cabinetry within the building. Again, heavily utilized and throughout the years, and any need for possible replacement of those items within the building. Then in terms of the exterior, again, going around and categorizing the exterior condition of, you know, whether it's the brick, the windows, one of the things we look at. And again, Jim has done, and Jim and his staff have done a lot to replace and update windows. You know, the single-pane windows is something you see in a lot of older buildings that are energy-efficient. And a lot of times complaints of temperature control or drafty and those types of things. types of things. So, again, we want to make sure that any of those are cataloged, and we know or foresee that they have to be addressed. Doors, roofing, I'll get to that in a minute, there's another diagram that I think better illustrates some of the need or considerations for that as we go through. So, within this, then, this is also documented graphically, so we tried to, again, show on the plan where each of these areas, so these numbers here kind of correlate back to that previous chart, so, so there's kind of an understanding of needs. So, like, this blue area up here, for example, was some erosion issues that we're seeing at the base of the building due to the pitched roof. I believe the red here were some areas where, again, where the windows were starting to show their age, and there was some recommendations to potentially look at replacing those. As stated, the site summary, again, looking through both describing what conditions are in terms of what issues you're seeing on the site, and then, in this particular case, we did recommend what replacement would be, and we did this purely from the perspective of understanding what would be then budgeted for the particular, to fix that particular thing. Also looked at, and I think this is the one you said was addressed, was the ADA ramp and any other of those type of concerns that we had on the exterior portion of the building. And, again, followed through with some graphics to try to illustrate where those areas are on the site. ADA accessibility, this chart really kind of is an interesting one in terms of, it kind of describes both the code issue that we are trying to address, so very specific language here, and then, again, kind of highlights the area or the concern that we have within the building. And, again, I always state with regard to the code things, these aren't necessarily, again, things that make the buildings deficient, but these are things that we need to know as a background if we're planning for a building. So, most, if not all of the buildings have some type of ADA accessible bathroom within them. They're generally ADA accessible throughout most of the areas of the building. But, again, buildings don't necessarily, are not required to be brought up to code. There are grandfather laws where, when they were built, you know, it's just a framing of what we need to know if we're going to do work on them. So, again, that, these descriptions and items are also then conveyed graphically within the report as well. This was referenced earlier, so the roof, during our best of catalog, the roof, this was actually one of the, I think, one of the buildings where there were some, we knew that, you know, what the conditions were, we didn't necessarily have all the information on warranties and exact date of installation, so in the other examples we're providing today, you'll see there's a little bit more information. Here's some information up here of what was done in 2009. And then, doors, so, again, looking around the exterior of the building and considering doors. Again, very typical in a lot of school buildings is the, we call them hollow metal doors, so a lot of times the exterior doors will either be hollow metal or aluminum. Well, again, living in Wisconsin, dealing with the salt issues, the hollow metal doors, if they're older doors, they generally will have some rust and deterioration at the bottom of them. So, again, trying to give the district some sense of condition for each of those, so fair, good, fair, good, and poor, I believe, are the three sort of metrics that we used to evaluate the doors. And then, again, the locations of where they are in the building. So, Emmeline Cook, again, 30,000 square feet, 280 students, nine-acre site, 44 stalls Little description of the building, and then, again, the evolution, so originally built in '54 with the big addition in '58, and then '91 is the green area here. Again, the site, this one, very, very simple site on the corner of the neighborhood. Again, our floor plan. So, highlight just a couple of the mechanical items on this particular one. Again, this one is on a municipal water service, but it is a two-inch water service, and, again, just, again, providing some context of what this means to us. Should this building have an addition or a consideration for an addition in the future? That water service, we always need to take in consideration if a sprinkler system would be required as part of that type of work, so, in this particular case, that water service would not be large enough to accommodate a sprinkler system. Again, the water piping in this one, the distribution piping in this one is copper, so, again, that's a very positive within the building. Another one I just wanted to touch on with regard to this one, again, is within the plumbing condition, there's some notations about showers in elementaries, and, again, most times showers have become storage rooms, so whether we remove or abandon some of those fixtures, so, so those rooms, we don't have a water issue at some point in time down the future. Oops, HVAC in this building was primarily done in 2011. And then, again, from the electrical perspective, again, the service and some of the panels and so forth are, you know, whether they were exactly original or some of the older vintage, there was a recommendation to take a look at those and get those replaced at some point in time in the future. Again, likely part of some type of a renovation project. Again, going through the needs assessment and condition of, again, the interior and exterior, so here's one where, you know, I just wanted to kind of point out there was some, still some single-pane windows that likely, again, were probably original to that building. Again, some of the, you know, some of the flooring within the building is starting to show its age, specifically, I think, in some of the corridors, which, again, I think you'd expect from a 50s vintage building. So, again, those items noted on the floor plan. Site, again, as I think you maybe caught a glimpse from the original site plan, there's not a lot of pavement and hard surface on this particular site, so our list is potentially a little smaller for this particular building. And then, again, the areas outlined on the plan is, again. Again, our ADA accessibility, you know, again, so building entrances, the building has multiple ADA accessible entrances, ADA stalls, so not all of these necessarily are even deficiencies within the ADA compliance, it's even, some of these are really pointing out some of the things that you do meet and are qualifying for. And, again, some of that diagramming to support those ADA notations. Again, this is our roof report for this particular building, a little simpler of a diagram here, but, again, great job by the district of keeping up the roofs, the oldest section on this one, unless it's been replaced, the summer was in '99, so, again, great job by the district to continue their efforts, I mean, throughout the district, but specifically at this building, we're in really good shape. Again, our exterior doors, see a few more fares potentially this time around than the previous building, and, again, it all comes down to kind of how the salt can kind of get to those doors and start to rust out the bottom of it. So, you may have some buildings that have better conditions than other, and, again, it's just how, I mean, mainly how the salt and water interacts with those doors. Any questions before I continue on Merrill? Yes?
I just had an overall question. At one point, we were supplied with a cost estimate for some of these repairs?
I was looking for it.
Okay, okay.
So, again, Merrill, a larger building, 167,000 square feet, 722 students, that includes elementary and middle school. Again, this is our K8 building, 11 acres, so, again, you saw the previous building, I think, was roughly, almost the same site size, or around the same, 91 parking stalls, and then our bus counts.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, there, the Merrill site doesn't involve the parking across the street, or it does?
I don't believe we included that. If, in a couple slides, we'll get to that, and that'll show the parameters of the site. They may have included it, though. We did get one piece of information in terms of the, we have a gap here initially when we went through, again, hard finding some of the original drawings for this. This building was built in 1900, so we do have that information added, but, again, additions '31, '53, '65, '92, '97, there may be some historical scholars in, either in the audience today or in the community, that as we go through this process, they, we may have missed one or slightly misrepresented one, but, again, a long progression of this building and number of, over the course of the last 118 years. So, this is the evaluation of the site, so to answer your question, no, I don't believe we took into account the property across the street, we just did the, kind of the contiguous.
Or even the newer property that we purchased last year either.
Correct, that would not be part of this.
Is there any, is there, is there any, is there any interest or any need to assess that involved that in this, or not?
We, I mean, we may want to consider that, yeah, because, I mean, that plays into it, obviously, whatever parking we can provide in those areas maybe helps lessen the need for parking and that on the actual site proper, so we will make note of that. Again, the floor plans, so this building, lower level, first floor, there's kind of an upper-level mezzanine around the gymnasium, which is awesome, I love those gyms. And then, our second and third floor plans above the classroom areas. In terms of, again, mechanicals within the building, from a plumbing perspective, this one's a little bit unique, there's actually two water services that connect to the building. Again, it's not, it's something we see in other buildings. The assumption would be, I think, in this particular case, again, if a major addition or maybe a massive renovation was planned, that a new water service may, again, be needed for a sprinkler system that may be needed. I mentioned earlier that, you know, the, when we consider the water piping distribution, galvanized piping is something we see as a potential issue in terms of longevity and leaks and maintenance issues, so there is kind of a mixture of this building of still some older galvanized, as well as some areas that have been updated with copper. From the HVAC perspective, again, this one was done in 2013. On the electrical side, again, as you'd expect in an older vintage building, you still have some of those conditions with the older service elements within it, older distribution, some of the accommodations for electrical, again, just didn't exist when some of these portions of the buildings were added on to or originally built, so, again, bringing it up to modern standards and needs within the building is really critical. Our needs assessment within this building, again, just to highlight a couple items, again, the plaster, condition of the plaster walls in the building is kind of a big issue, and you'll see that when we kind of get to the budget in terms of that consideration. And, again, just given the vintage of the building, there's a lot of items that, you know, have really, well-outlived their life in terms of, again, the finishes and windows and so forth. Oh, is my mouse battery running out?
Kate, you want to?
Thank you. Oh, here we go. And then, again, the building envelope itself, looks like I got a little, I got a little juice back. The exterior, the brick, again, there's conditions where it's visibly worn, there's likely need for tuck pointing and stuff in terms of the exterior brick. The windows, again, some areas of single-pane windows within the building, so updating those for comfort control and energy efficiency. Again, our diagramming for those items. Site, again, the cataloging and consideration of all those areas within the building, or within the exterior site area. So, this one, we actually did take into consideration some of the needs across the street here, as well as this additional, this is district-owned property as well, so, as well as this area as well. So, again, that 11 acres that we described earlier is just the building proper itself. Our ADA, again, this building, again, given its age, the number of additions and so forth over the years, there's more things to consider and go through as you're, as you're planning a potential project or renovation within the building. But, again, not atypical and not what we see in many buildings of this vintage. So, in this particular case, we kind of broke it up by floor level. So, again, our roof assessment, there's some items, we had a lot of great information on, and then there were some areas where we did not have specific history information on them, so you can kind of see the different areas here within it. So, I think, what's the oldest section here, '95, of kind of the known areas, '93. So, again, doing '93, it looks to be, and maybe some of those other no-history areas might be a little bit older, but, again, the district's done a great job of updating as they can periodically, and really, you're kind of in that, the process that you use kind of on a cyclical basis, doing the roofing is a great way to go about it, otherwise, if you wait, you have to do, you know, a building at a, a whole entire building at a time, and the cost for that is generally very expensive and difficult to do out of an operating budget. Again, our exterior doors, so, again, kind of a mixture of fares, goods, and a couple pores sprinkled in there. In the diagram, so, made it through that. So, from there, again, the next piece of this was the cost analysis, so, again, this was something that was shared, I believe, back in December of last year. So, the facility study, again, it went through the needs, the summaries, interior, exterior, site needs, and then, again, the infrastructure needs within the building, buildings. This was a document we included, again, understanding what some of the assumptions are within the budget. Again, anytime you do create a budget, you know, these are, these are not bids, these are, these are truly budgets, so there's, it's really important to kind of understand what baselines were utilized. So, again, the, based on 2018 pricing, again, I won't go through all of these. Wall repairs was, you know, a dollar per square foot for what needed to be repaired, minimal, moderate, excessive. Infrastructure improvements, again, were Infrastructure improvements, again, were included from that, the facilities document specifically. So I think what this overall process did, we really took kind of each of those elements that were provided within the facility assessment. And as you'll see, when we get to the specific budgets, we really assigned, went through each of these and, and assigned. This was not purely a cost per square foot budget in terms of an, an overall building. Really, uh, again, I think a pretty thorough examination of what the needs were and then what the costs for each of those needs were. So I think you may have alluded to this document earlier. So we, we, um, we had a full budget summary of, of kind of the overall district. Um, so I, I'll, I'll pan down, but we had each of the elementary buildings or elementary middle school were grouped here. Middle school, high schools. And then, uh, again, some of the peripheral district buildings, the administration building, and maintenance building, and recreation building were also included within this, um, full budget analysis. So this is kind of a, a full-blown look at, at the, the district needs.
Is this linked in our board packet? I can't seem to find.
No, it's not.
No, we don't have this, yeah.
You did give it to us a year ago, but it's not a few of us today.
This should have been in the document I sent you the other day.
Well, we have.
It was in what you sent me, then it wasn't put in the board.
Okay, okay.
I don't remember.
Um, from there, we broke the summary out into a little bit more detail, um, again, from a district-wide perspective. So again, we have all of the buildings listed over here. And then we kind of broke each of these out into those buckets, if you will, of, that were included within the, um, within, so ADA accessibility, building envelope, so the exterior of the building, building interior. Um, we did include some kind of owner items that, that were discussed, um, with, within that. And we can kind of get, when we get to the detailed budgets for each of the examples, you can kind of see that. Again, plumbing, again, great job by the district. This HVAC number is just unbelievably low compared to, um, a lot of times what we see here. Um, so again, I kind of wanted to point this out because this is just outstanding. Electrical, and then this was exterior site improvements. And then from there, um, again, we, we use, using our three case studies, again, we went through each of the buildings. And this is kind of the analysis, our information for each of the, the buildings to kind of support those overall numbers. So this is, again, this is oak wood. So the ADA accessibility budget number that you see there includes all of these various items throughout here, which were highlighted or noted within the report. So, um, so there were some needs within this one to provide additional access to some areas of the building that, that don't currently have ADA access, accessibility. Um, again, updating doors and stuff and, and those types of things. Again, these are not items that, um, we're stating that have to be done tomorrow within the district. These are, are, again, are items of, for, for your consideration. They're items that we need to know and should, should plan for. Should a renovation or addition type project be considered at the school?
Quick question?
Yes.
My eyes are so bad, I cannot really see that. Is there any link? Do you guys get, find one?
Is there any?
A link in our, that we can link to?
I'll send a link. I thought it was part of the presentation, but it, it wasn't included. So I will get this information up to you.
Thank you so much.
We, we have a full spreadsheet of all the schools.
Okay, great, thank you.
Again, so if we just bring that, that example across, so this is either a per-unit cost. So if we, if, again, if within our budgets, we know what something specifically costs, or some of these are, you know, based on a square footage cost. So replacing flooring, those types of things is done on a square footage cost. And we did, within the, um, the estimates here, we did try to provide the district with a full, um, kind of a full consideration or full, um, project cost. So understanding there is, is additional construction costs for overhead. Again, for whatever the potential construction would be, estimated soft costs, whether that's permitting, whether that's design, um, those types of things. So within these numbers, we tried to, to give the district a, a full comprehensive cost of what this would be. So again, going through building envelope, interior items. So again, the, I mentioned some of the areas for wall replacements. So within this building, we had about 52,000 square feet of wall area that we, that are needed to be replaced and, and included in and created a budget for that. Whoops. Um, the owner items in this particular case were assigned as the casework. So I mentioned earlier of some of the need, um, within the buildings to update the casework. And then again, going through, um, with the plumbing, um, if any HVAC was needed, electrical. So this did include, I mentioned earlier, some of the other components like keyless entries. So there was a, you know, in this particular case, there was, was, um, a, a security system component that we noted in here. So again, tried to be as, as comprehensive and thorough as possible, um, going through this. Um, the site, site improvements and site needs. So, um, working through those areas, areas within each of those sites. Uh, and then again, in this particular case, there was a consideration for a ramp replacement or, or being added. So again, that level of detail was provided for, for all of the buildings. Again, we brought tonight, um, the three, again, of kind of our case study, again, Cook, um, Oak, Oakwood and Merrill. So I don't know if you want me to go through the, kind of the detail of each of those, but they're, they're kind of, they're exactly categorized the same way. So again, a year ago, we kind of left you with, with the next steps. Um, and really, this is kind of what, the jumping off point that we've been doing for the last, um, six, seven, eight months or so. Um, we've been meeting with the administration team on fairly close to a two to three week, um, schedule. Um, again, doing kind of those things that I stated earlier, were not part of the original facility. So, um, we're studying the capacity of each of the schools and, and then trying to determine an at or over, over or under capacity. What's important for the capacity, it's, it's, it's not how many people can the building hold by, on a code basis. It's educational capacity. So understanding how many kids we ideally want to teach in each of the classrooms. Um, understanding that not, there's not going to be a kid crammed in every single room within the building. Um, you know, understanding cafeteria, um, the ability for a cafeteria to hold a certain number of students. So, um, it's important to understand where the buildings stand for that perspective. Uh, again, understanding the quantity, quality of educational spaces that we want to provide within each of the schools. Um, consider school configurations. So, uh, building sizes, locations, grade configurations. Again, um, working through a number of scenarios to, to consider for those. We haven't gotten to this point yet. Again, we, we're, we're working, uh, long ways away. But again, exploring, eventually exploring, uh, solutions. Um, again, taking into account all of these assessments, again, so that we make sure we have as comprehensive of a project as possible. Um, and then again, and consider communities' engagement strategies, whether it's focus groups or committees, surveys, those types of things along the way. Um, I do want to just quickly, um, just share kind of a draft. There's a, a document that we've been trying to work on, and Dr. Cartwright has requested this of us. And again, this is very much in draft form, but we wanted to, um, as we're going through this, we're seeing the need to really condense all of this information into kind of a, a easy, easy digestible, easy to communicate document. So this is kind of an example of what, what we, draft of what we've started. So again, um, working through, um, from the elementary, middle school perspective, understanding what the current enrollments are. Again, that educational capacity, which I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit. Um, the site sizes, the building sizes, the year built, um, the, when additions were potentially put on each of the buildings. Um, providing that capital maintenance needs from the, that earlier spreadsheet that we, we looked at from the overall costs. And then, um, this is again, kind of a snapshot of, of what we're looking at in terms of spaces that are, are needed within the building um, for, for, for an ideal scenario for, for learning and so forth. So again, this is very, very much in draft form tonight. Um, we're, we're still kind of working through the bugs on this in terms of how it lays out. If this is an eight and a half by 11 rather than 11 by 17 sheet, so a, a lot more work to do on that particular one. How did I do on time? So again, uh, any questions? Again, that was perhaps a little, a little fast. There's a lot of, lot of information, a lot of material here. But again, I, I think as we, um, continue this study process, it was really important for us to take a step back and kind of re, just remind and reevaluate and have you kind of look at this again to sort of see where, where we, where we were. Yes?
I'm sorry, okay. So if you were to go back to the initial, um, spreadsheet when you were going over the cost analysis, what exactly is? I know like this isn't your case studies that you were focused on for the high schools. But, um, what exactly is happening at West that like differentiates like 24,000, that's 24 million that is spent at West to 13 million that is spent at North? Like what exactly is happening at West? Or is it just because of the windows? Or is it the number of students? Like what exactly is causing that difference?
So, yeah, so, so.
California school building.
So North and West, you can kind of see along the bottom. And so West is the, the bottom one along the high school here. And I'll, I'm just going to go up so you can see. So from the perspective of, of what categories, there's a big difference. So, um, building envelope, the exterior of West, I'm, I'm guessing the windows probably were a big part of that in particular. Um, interior-wise, um, there's a pretty large difference there. Plumbing perspective, again, it's, I believe that one's a much larger building as well. So I, I think it's, part of that's amplified.
Size, windows inside that? Okay, thank you.
But yeah, that's a, that's a good catch because it is a pretty sizable difference when you kind of look at and compare the two. And again, well, you know, one of the things we'll need to do with Jim is, I think specifically on that one, is there was quite a bit of work recently done there. You know, we may need to reevaluate and take a look at that one and, and update those numbers potentially as, as projects are, are completed at each of them. So we have a fair assessment of what, where they stand.
I just want to make one, one comment on the overall study. I thought it was fairly well done. It's something that's very difficult to capture. I, I think we've discussed this a couple of times. It's, we can talk about the fact that it's got copper piping and it looks like it's been, been renovated at some point. But what we're also seeing from a maintenance standpoint is we're seeing copper piping just burst. We're seeing it leak. Where, you know, the water actually wears out the inside of the copper piping to the point where it's very thin and it starts to leak. And, and with these massive masonry walls that we have in a lot of our older facilities, we, we can't get at the piping where it's currently located. So you, we're finding ourselves isolating sections of piping. You can, you can try to pipe around it. But if you can imagine the difficulty in, in trying to achieve that. So some of the things that we look at and we identify, it's really difficult to quantify truly what, what that cost is. And although you can, you can, you can say it's a dollar a square foot to a wall, or $4 a square foot, or, or $5 per linear foot of pipe. And that's just a generic number that we can assign in this industry-wide. But when we start looking at the actual, uh, area where we're having our problems, that, that, that price becomes amplified significantly because nothing is ever a straight shot or easily accessible when, when you're dealing with some of these aging buildings. Um, you know, mold issues and water infiltration and, and the lack of, of our perimeter of our buildings to be able to capture, collect and, and convey water away from those facilities has, has caused significant problems. So I think these numbers are great, and I think it's a great, uh, launching point to, to generate some, some very colorful conversation and, and be able to really identify where our greatest needs are. But there certainly are deeper discussions that need to be had when we start really looking at specific problems and, and trying to understand those and understand the costs and what would be necessary to correct those problems.
Yes.
If I may, also, I just want to make this point because this was something that you stated at the very beginning of this presentation. And I think it's worth noting, um, the difference. And if I'm incorrect, please correct me. But the cost that we're seeing here is just to basically make repairs to the facility to get them to where they're functioning appropriately, for the most part. In other words, this has nothing to do with how we utilize the facility. This has nothing to do with how the classrooms are, um, are being implemented and such. Um, am I capturing that accurately?
Yes, you are absolutely. And I, I, again, I think we had kind of a slide that, that sort of highlighted or featured, um, that point very well in stating kind of what this is not, or what, you know, this, this part of the overall study was not. Let's see if we can get up there. It's very early on. Um, so again, it was not an exploration or analysis of, of quantity, size, or quality of educational space. It was not, um, it was not solutions. It was not addressing capacity. So yes, Dr. Cartwright, that's absolutely a very great point and specifically highlights, um, I think, again, what our efforts are moving forward here in terms of, um, addressing those.
So even if the school district were to utilize funds to bring everything up to par, as you might say, for those issues. Um, Jim, you had mentioned that, that does not take into account any future things that we know that potentially would be coming our way just because of the mere age of the, of the facilities. Am I correct on that?
Correct. So the assumed dollars, as you had stated, uh, that we had discussed tonight that are part of the study would really just correct what we know to be problems now leaving the space exactly as it is.
And quite frankly, it would be pretty rare, if we use the piping as an example, it'd be pretty rare, a lot of times, for a building or a district to go through and, and say, replace all of the galvanized piping. And generally, we do it in the areas we're doing renovation or the areas we're touching for that very purpose that, that Jim said. We're not exposing all of the walls. We're not exposing all of the ceilings, um, most times. So it would have to be, I think, a pretty catastrophic issue within a building to, to take on a project specifically, again, to that, to that piping issue. So, um, so yes, it, it, to both of their points, they're absolutely right. And in kind of the, um, this part of the assessment and, and what it's hoping to achieve is, again, kind of a snapshot of known. It's a snapshot of fixing, really fixing in place what you have as, as best we possibly can. Um, and there's a lot of other considerations that need to be taken into account as we move, as we move forward.
Are there any other comments or questions?
One, yes.
Question?
I think when I was looking over these, these studies or summaries, I just caught the difference of phrases. So like, just for instance, fire protection system versus fire suppression system. So are those different things or are they the same?
No, they're synonymous. And it's just basically, it's sprinkler system. So, yeah.
Okay. So that doesn't involve like, does that involve like a smoke detector?
A smoke detector would fall under the, the electrical assessment. So that would be the fire alarm system. So.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one. Jim, did you use this and do, I know obviously the windows at North, or I mean, West got, or weren't being done. And that's on here. So that's a big chunk off of there because of the McKinley. But what about some of the ADA stuff and some of the doors that were in poor, I mean, are you? So this isn't up to date, obviously. So some of those other issues have already, I can't, that, have we worked on some of those other issues already?
Uh, some issues.
Yeah, I mean, ones that we have to.
Windows, windows at West, it just, there happened to be an overlap with McKinstry and efficiency and, and the wall panels and how they're integrated. So, uh, most of, of what we've seen here tonight, I, I, some of it, I can't recall exactly which pieces. But, um, um, interior doors, we're not working on. Exterior doors, as they fail.
Yeah.
They get replaced because there are, are so many doors. And, um, we carry a capital improvement fund. We don't carry a renovation fund as, as part of our budgeted numbers. And the dollars that we do have are quickly used up with a one parking lot, two parking lots. And you've seen, uh, just on these three buildings, we probably saw somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 roof sections, 40 to 50 roof sections on three different buildings. Well, when you look at that district-wide, um, it becomes quite expensive every year trying to maintain roof sections.
So.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
So is there, like, I noticed that we have very few wood doors that are, that are there, and we have more hollow metal doors. Is there a standard that, that we're trying to meet here?
You have wood doors likely on the interior of the building, or there are wood doors on the interior. So classroom doors are generally wood. So exterior door are the ones that I, I referenced as hollow metal. Um, generally, again, if you ask my preference, I think the aluminum-style doors last much better in this environment in, in Wisconsin. We've, we've had very good luck with them. So when we're replacing exterior doors, we generally do it with an aluminum-type door.
And we'd want to maintain our interior doors as wood doors then?
That's, that's generally the standard, yeah.
It, it is. And, and, um, you know, some of. And, and, um, you know, some of what we've seen, uh, in, in some schools where, where the doors are failing, interior wood doors, what we find is that the construction, um, in some schools is failing and some schools was poor. It's just a, a technique of that particular era. We, there isn't enough structural integrity around the doors to be able to handle today's doors. For example, a Mammon door is a very common door that is used today. It's a thermally fused door. But you need heavy wood around the door to be able to, to bear, carry the weight of the door. So we, in a lot of times, in many cases, we can't just replace like for like without tearing the entire wall apart and trying to reframe the wall to be able to support a door unless we go with a hollow frame wood door, which I think you're familiar with in, in light residential. That, those types of doors don't hold up well in schools, which is why we see a lot of our doors failing in our schools. So sometimes a very simple problem such as a failing door really reveals a much more significant problem. How, how do you replace that without ripping open a wall and really rebuilding an entire wall that you can't get to for a variety of reasons?
Small project becomes a big project.
Sure.
Other questions or comments? Well, I thank you and the teams, team you represent, you both represent for certainly a report that is full of lots and lots of detail and lots of food for thought. I think a big question for me and maybe my fellow board members is next steps. So you do have a slide here outlining next steps. And I guess I'd turn to administration for, for some wisdom on, on what they're thinking at this point.
So this is going to be a series of discussions. My recommendation to you is a series of discussions as we start really diving into this at a much deeper level. There are components of it. So for example, when we talk about capacity, uh, we have to really take a look at what are, what are our enrollment trends, you know, long-term and those kind of things and what that may potentially look like. Then we also have to have some serious discussion related to the educational use of a facility and what the needs are in 2018 to, you know, 2050, right? Or forward and what that looks like and how that is potentially different from when many of these buildings were built. You know, as we, as we saw tonight, we have building that was built in 1900. You know, there were a lot of facilities that were built in the 1950s. Question I do have is for educational facilities on average, what do you typically see the lifespan of a building typically?
Well, I, I think, um, most school districts are, are looking for at minimum a 50-year building. But again, as we see with the struggle it is just to get funding and, and, and that type of thing, it's, it's not, um, unlikely to see a building last, you know, 75 to 100 years. Again, it's very true that, you know, we don't build them like we, they used to. As Jim, you know, alluded to, there's Merrill in particular, some others. You know, they're, they're very well built, very well constructed. Modern, modern construction, I think, is still very well done and, and it'll last a long time. But I think most districts in the state, you know, are, are looking for a 50-year solution for their, for their buildings. So I, I'd, I think that answers your question.
Thank you. So those are just some points that, um, as, as a conversation. These were conversation things that the board, we will, administration will bring in on a quarterly basis will provide some updates to you in order for you to have more information and to start engaging in whatever type of conversation that you would like to proceed in based off that information.
Thank you very much. I think that will be very helpful. There's a lot of material to analyze here and to digest. I continue to be concerned about the, the quality of our science classrooms, science labs. I'm not sure when those were last updated on a serious and comprehensive scale. But to only fix what we know needs fixing, but not look at the educational needs seems short sighted. So I think it has to be a broad, um, analysis of physical facilities as you've presented them, plus also looking at some of the other things you've noted in the next steps and specifically looking at the, the, the quality of the, um, facilities and the, and the regions, the capacities, the uses. When many of these buildings were constructed, we didn't have school social workers, school counselors, special education rooms, um, lots of other things that we now have nurses areas, especially those 1950s and before. We have buildings going back to at least 1871, I believe is, is about the age of Smith Elementary School. And while those, those brick constructions have withstood the test of time, it's what goes on in those classrooms and at what point does it, um, make sense to look at different configurations, whether those are grade configurations or those are space configurations or new buildings? That I think needs to be part of the analysis. I see this as a very large and comprehensive venture for this board and this community. And you've helped us on this journey, so thank you. And you will continue to help.
I will.
This is just a starting, or continuation. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time tonight. Right, moving on, we have a consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately at that time. We will be pulling 1B. Is there any, I guess there's only two. Is there anything else we want to pull? Okay, then the board will consider approval of number one personnel. A, appointments, temporary appointments, resignations and salary.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, please call the roll. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner? Rizov? Aye. Kerlog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Pashen?
Aye.
Pashen, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Motion carried. Resolution 1B. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approving retirements as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
Still moved? Somebody needs a second.
Second.
Sorry.
I think we're all in shell shock after the last workshop. I was hoping to have this pulled for the purpose of recognizing the three individuals who have devoted, uh, years and years of service to the children and families of our school district. June Katie Ford is retiring as a building assistant from Carl Trager Elementary School. As of November 2nd, 2018, she has been employed with the district since 2001. Monica Hevner, a kindergarten teacher from Jefferson Elementary School, will be retiring at the end of July, 2019. She has been with the district since 1992. And Anton Or Tony Plasko, Plashko, has been a maintenance craftsman to plumber with the district since, uh, 2001 and will be retiring also on November 2nd, 2018. We wish these people all the best. We know that you've given us your best over these many years, serving our children and the families of our district. And we wish you well in your new experiences and, um, hope that you'll come back and visit us. Maybe Monica will even come back and serve as a substitute, so we, we can only hope. Any other comments? All right, please call the roll. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner? Rizov? Aye. Rizov, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Pashen?
Aye.
Pashen, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, motion carried. Thank you very much. Are there any individually considered resolutions tonight? Is there a request for future agenda items?
I do have one, Dr. Verstappen. In light of, I had the opportunity, not so much tonight, but earlier this week, to spend a little time with our German students and the Oshkosh West students. And, and just considering really for the span of my time in this role in the Board of Education, thinking about the world as, as we find it today. And I'd like to have a discussion with our, our board and certainly our executive team and whomever else appropriate on the place of world languages in our schools. You know, I think we're in a period of retraction and I've always found that a little alarming or a little concerning. And I'd like to have a conversation. I don't even know that we need a workshop per se or a lot of data per se, but I'm thinking that it's more of a philosophical or experiential conversation. What, what do we value and how do, how do languages fit into the experience of our students? So I'm not quite sure how to move forward with that, but, but I'd love to have that conversation.
All right, we'll certainly put that on the agenda.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
That could possibly be a workshop, maybe with data on a state level and maybe with some of our sister schools of approximately our size and what offerings they have or what, in a, in a broader sense, in terms of global education, what are they doing in addition to languages?
Perfect.
So something like that. Or, but it's really your item, so you need to help us frame that. I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, happy to, but I think you've done wonderfully, right? You kind of helped with think of, um, of the delight and the spark in the eye of the students who traveled, right? And profound impact.
It was beautiful.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any announcements tonight? All right, with that then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business where whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session under Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent one, parent E. And that would be item A, consider sale of property.
So moved?
Second.
Please call the roll. Garner? Rizov? Aye. Rizov, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Pashen?
Aye.
Pashen, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Monica? Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Motion carried. Thank you very much. We will adjourn to executive session back in the, um, what is it? Oh, yeah, exactly.